All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council for Monday, November 13th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Homer, if you could give the invocation, please.
Our gracious and loving God, come before you this evening hour, thanking thee for the day we've had, thanking you for this time tonight, asking your blessing to be upon this council meeting at this evening hour. And I pray, our Father, that your blessing would be upon it, because I trust that each and every one here has already developed the mind of Christ, and having the mind of Christ will treat each topic carefully and would also treat each individual, regardless of disagreements, with respect and admiration for who they are, and everything they put forth for the good of our community. And may we have at heart your will be done in all things to the glory of your Son, Jesus Christ, in whose name I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. We have approval of the minutes from our meeting on October 23rd, 2017. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes? Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Before I get to the approval of the agenda, I have a letter to read, and then also I have some comments after that. This letter was given to me by Bill Chukuski yesterday, and he wanted me to read it tonight, and I am going to read it now. It's on Sunday, November 12th, 2017. City of Tracy, dear Mayor and Council, in November of 2016, 418 taxpaying Tracy citizens voted for me in the election for city council. They did this for a reason, as they were not happy with the way the council at the time was managing the city. Since January 1st, 2017, I, along with fellow councilmember Tony Peterson, have received nothing but negative attacks by a certain group of negative citizens. They have called us bullies, they should look in the mirror. Every time we have questioned something, we have been accused of being bullies and picking on people. Since when does asking a city employee for information and giving advice, or asking for someone to check into something, become bullying and telling an employee what to do? It is obvious to me that someone within the city employment is feeding information to these negative people. The City of Tracy will never move forward and grow in a positive manner with negative people always trying to undermine the city council. Unfortunately, the 418 citizens who voted for me have not been willing to come to council meetings and make their voices heard. I have asked several who privately tell me, hang in there, don't give up, why they do not come to the meetings and express their feelings. They are afraid of the same negative abuse and bullying from this select group of people in our city. I am not going to name names, as everyone in town who attends or watches the council meetings or reads the local news knows who these negative bullies are. Mayor, you can do something about this by removing the public comment from the council agenda. It has proven to be nothing more than a negative feeding platform. This city council job is part-time and thankless at best. I am stealing the statement Madonna made on the posted note she left. I can no longer work under these circumstances. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, I am way too busy and have way too many important things to deal with in my life than all of these negative petty and anti-productive actions of these people. Until positive taxpaying citizens come to the city council meetings and tell these few negative people to sit down and be quiet, this city will go nowhere. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, I hereby resign my position as a city council member. Sincerely, Bill Chukuski. The few comments that I have to make, and I hope everyone affords me the opportunity to make these comments, because I have been involved in city government close to 18 years in this city. This is my 11th year as the mayor, and I've been six years as a city council member. And I can tell you that the last couple months, having to come to council meetings, has not been a fun prospect. I never anticipated every single meeting would be good, but it's been difficult, to say the least. Within the past 60 days, we've had two resignations, now with bills, and one recall petition, all within 60 days. You don't need me to tell you that the view of our city is one of dysfunction. And what I want to do, as much as I can as mayor and being one of, now four, to put an end to it now, because we need to move forward. We have the recall petition in February, and whatever the voters want to decide, they can decide. We don't need to rehash it anymore, because that's all over and done with. But what we need to do is get past all the negativity that seems to be fed all over the place, and we have a major paper compared to us up the street that likes to put a lot of bad things about our city in it. It needs to stop. I get phone calls constantly from people saying, "I don't understand why this commission's running this way. I don't understand why this city employee is doing this. I don't like what this city employee is doing, or that city employee is doing. I don't like what this councilmember is doing versus this councilmember is doing." It's got to stop, because we've reached a tipping point where it can no longer continue. And I hope everybody in this room, and everybody's watching on television, recognizes that fact. Because what I want to do is to say, lay out some things that I want to see happen at the council meetings. I'm not going to get rid of the public comment period, because I see the value in it, but I want to remind people that it's not going to be used to run other people down. If we have specific issues that want to be addressed, fine, but what we've seen lately are personal attacks against people, and I personally don't appreciate that. And again, I'm trying to be as civil as possible, and I hope everybody else is going to be as well. I know there's difference of opinions on certain issues, but the public comment period is meant to bring up issues and not have personal attacks against people. And I hope, moving forward, people recognize that. There's a couple things that I want to bring up, and the council can say whether or not they agree with this or not, but in terms of when we get the agenda, and this is why I'm talking about it now. Now, we get the agenda on Thursday, and we get the agenda at the same time the public does, because it goes on the public website. What I'm suggesting, and if people don't agree with it, that's fine, we don't have to do that, what I suggest is that we, as a council, get the agenda on Thursday, look at it, say if we have any suggestions or changes. If there isn't, then it goes on the public forum on Friday. Does that sound fair? Then the next thing is, we have the outstanding issue all the time, if there are public comments, that we have it on the agenda always to answer every single one of those questions. If they're general questions that aren't directed at an individual councilmember, I have no problem answering those questions. Say, for instance, you know, what's the price of the pool pass going to be next summer? Something like that. But when it's individual questions, like we got today to answer, mostly that were directed at Bill, if there's individual questions addressed to a particular councilmember, I want to leave it up to that particular councilmember to want to answer that question or not. Does that sound fair?
Yes.
If they choose to, fine. If they don't, then they're not answering it. So it's not always going to be that you've got to answer the questions regardless of whether a particular councilmember wants to answer it or not. That's my view. Does that sound fair?
Yes.
I don't want to take too much time, because I know we've got another five minutes until the public hearing, but for what it's worth, someone who has spent the majority of his time living in this town in public service, I beseech each and every one of you, when you come up to talk, and when you talk about our town, be cognizant of the fact that the perception of our town is now. And I know people have their best interests in heart, and I'm not questioning that, why people do what they do. But the way we're going about doing it is not helpful, and I'm just hopeful that from today on, we can move forward. We don't have to talk about a recall anymore. That's set, like I said, in February. Let the voters decide. Bill has opted to resign. I don't want to see Bill resign, but I don't, he wants to do that. But we can't have another 60 days like we had this past 60 days, with two resignations and a recall position, because what it does is it shows that we can't work together, and I don't want that perception any longer. Now, I know in the past, it's been said that I may mollycoddle people, or I'm not a strong leader, because what I view is, I want people to be able to have the liberty to do their jobs without being spied on and supervised, and have people look over their shoulder, because people need to be able to do that, to do the best job effectively. And the same goes with councilmembers, too. We need to be able to have that liberty to do that, to do the job that we've been elected to do. But I just want to say that, from tonight on, we have to work together, and we have to get rid of this negativity, because it's doing nothing but dragging our town down. So, thank you for my 10 minutes. All right, it's close enough to 6:45. Let's have the public hearing about the infrastructure assessments. Chris, could you go up and give us a spiel, please?
Sir? Can I pull that up?
Can I pull this? Will this get picked up, Shane, if I'm using this?
I didn't even do the agenda. Hold on a second, while that's not working. Yep, I didn't do the approval of the agenda. I'm too busy talking, so someone could tell me to be quiet next time. We have the approval of the agenda, and I see we have some additions on there, and because of Bill not being here, we can get rid of 10J. Are there any other additions to the agenda as it's presented?
We got, Mr. Mayor, we have under eight for public hearing. We did receive two letters that you have in front of you, from Dwayne Berry and Elaine Fisher.
Okay. And we have those on our desk.
Yep, so that'd be 8A, 1, and 2.
Yep.
And then, under 10I, we have two more petitions for local improvements, or private services that needs to be done. Two other properties in addition, Dolores Fredericks, so they're also in front of you.
Got that. And we have those on our desk. Anything else?
We have a committee under resolutions, Part F. This is actually under Part 10, or under 10E. This is a resolution that coincides with that.
Okay. All right.
Those are it for the addition.
Anybody have anything else they want to add? Now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Chris?
Sorry, did you say this does work, or?
For the TV.
Yeah, yeah, not for here.
You want the assessment roll-up first, or?
Let's throw the plans up first. So, real quickly, I'm just going to give an overview of what the project was. We'll wait for Shane to pull it up, but generally, it consisted of utility and street improvements, storm sewer, water main, and sanitary, as well as street improvements. Be easier to have a map to reference here. There was a new outfall line. If you want to go to page, I think, 28, to start with the existing. So, starting from upstream to downstream, Park Street, existing utilities were running through private property, under some houses in some cases, northeasterly, so the improvements included redoing Park Street, Emery Street, a little bit of Center Street, more of Emery Street east of Center, and then up this alley. If you go to the next page, Shane. Up the alley to East Hollitt, and then East Hollitt, all the way to, you can keep going, Fourth Street East to the north, and then Second Street, all the way up to Craig, and then Long Green Lane, and then off of Fourth Street East was Circle Drive. And a lot of that included getting utilities into the public right-of-way. If you go, I don't remember the page off the top of my head, but if you keep going forward, it'll show the proposed, this was all existing, showing what was being removed. Go on, a couple more. There we go. So again, the proposed improvements, we moved sanitary sewer into the public right-of-way, as well as storm sewer, Park Street, Emery, up the alley to East Hollitt, and then continuing downstream, if you keep going, Shane. North up Fourth Street East, and then over to Circle Drive, and then also up Second Street East and Long Green Lane, and then north of Highway 14, the outfall line was replaced and upsized all the way out to the existing ponds. And then the Phase 2 project, now we'll pick that up and take the outfall line to the new ponds. So that was kind of the scope of the project. Service stubs were provided for every property, and if the services were already going to the main in that location, they were hooked up, and then some people do need to reroute their services to get them off the mains that were going through private property. The total project cost was approximately 3.9 million. There was a bond for 2.66 million, general obligation improvement bond, and those require that 20% of the cost be assessed, so that was the basis, that was the target total assessment that the city used for assessment. So the total amount to be assessed was calculated to be $532,632, or $30, excuse me. And of that, city property is being assessed approximately 120,000. There are three parks, one of which is actually two parcels that were treated as if they were multiple properties. So if it's, for example, Werner Park on the south side of East Hollitt is the equivalent of several lots wide, so it was treated as multiple lots. That's why they carry a heavier assessment. And then the remainder of the costs were split evenly amongst all benefited properties. So the resulting assessment, and if you, I can pass out a copy of the assessment rule. It should have come with the notice as well, and if, I don't know, can you zoom in on that all, Shane? But save the city properties, the assessments are $5,435 per property. I don't know if anyone that was involved in discussing that wanted to say anything.
That's cool. Anybody here from the public want to talk about their assessment? Except Tony? Okay, whoever wants to go first, go ahead, up to the podium and say your name, and just say what you're objecting to.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. My name is Ron Coyle.
Ron, good evening.
My wife and I, Wendy, we live at 512 Center Street. We're right on the corner of East Emory and Center, the second house to the north. Looking at the map, we've got some, a line that we need to replace that goes through a good length of my property. Problem I'm having is, Mayor, I can't afford it. Talked with the plumber, he said anywhere between $2,503,000. I talked to Scott a little over a week ago. He'd said, even if he could do it, he didn't know when, and he's already backed, he's on the books, he's carrying, at the time, he said about $80,000 worth of work.
What kind of shape is it in?
Mine, I'm assuming it's good shape. I did not receive a video when they came in and looked at my line, so therefore, I'm assuming that my line is clear, going from the house back to the alleyway to the east. Along with that, $25,000 to $3,000 just to replace the line in my backyard. I've got probably a 60-foot tree. Haven't talked to a tree trimmer yet, but I'm sure that's anywhere from $750 to $1,000 to move that. This other $5,000 assessment, I'm having an issue paying my property taxes now. This is going to be a tough one for me to do. Paying for the new, to replace the new line, to remove the tree, to meet these new taxes, I need some help.
You do know the assessment's spread out, though, right? You don't have to write a check for five grand right off the bat.
And that's fine. I mean, I'm sure I can get with somebody here a little bit later on, too, and we can get that worked out. My question is, with this septic line, or the sewer line, do I need to go all the way from my house to the new city connection, or can I have a plumber come in and just do at that new connection, taking my old line to meet the new city line? That's where, I don't know what I can do, so that's why I'm here tonight.
Options? What will you do?
Go ahead, Shane. So, the reason you'd had to remove your line is where the old one was, kind of grand kittywampus, as you can see underneath all the houses.
Yeah, and it goes squarely through my backyard.
I mean, if everything's good, up to the point where it connects into the old one, you could start there, then take off and connect to the new one?
Is this, Shane, is this something I should meet with you in the next day or two and we can discuss?
You can, yep.
Okay, why don't we do that?
And if you haven't got a video, I can also provide you with that, too.
Okay, and that's why I'm saying, I'm thinking my line is okay.
Okay.
I mean, in my house, I don't have a septic pump. I've had plumbers there in the past, they've not said, you know, you need to put a pump in. It's just, I'm kind of at wits' end with this, and I'm sure if I would have spent a little more time researching it a year ago, I probably would have a better answer. But, yeah, the letter I got the other day was a little confusing, because it almost sounded like I needed to be upfront with a lot of thousands of dollars that I just don't have. So, but, yeah, Shane, if I can get with you, say, before the end of the week, I did get the letter that said we needed a response by the 24th. That's why I was hoping I could find a plumber that could help me out, and that's fallen through, and, but.
Yeah, if you just meet with Shane in the next couple of days, it'll take care of it.
Perfect. Great. Everyone, thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Tony? The answer's no.
Mr. Mayor and councilpersons, I thank you for allowing me to come up here this evening. I live in the same block as Ron. I have slightly different issue. I'm here for the assessments. As I got the assessment in the mail, it didn't take me very long to realize what my cost or share was going to be. I have no problems paying a fair share of the assessment, as long as it's a fair portion of that. Many of the residences on the list, they got water, they got sewer, street, curb, gutter, all that, and the city council has coined this as a hookup fee, and not an assessment. And that's fine. In my portion, I live at 572 Center Street, and alley went through the backyard, and I had to put in a $2,500 sewer to hook up with that. That's fine, that's part of the deal. If it's a hookup fee, and I only have to pay for what I hooked up to, then I should be paying half of the assessment according to what the city council has laid out in their hookup fee. To go back to the work session of October 23rd, 2017, the INS said there's going to be residences that aren't going to be hooking into water and sewer, and there's going to be an issue. Two councilmen agreed with that, and said we need to look at that and fix that. My concern is, is the next phase, I think, comes down Center Street, and that's where my water is. I don't want a $5,000 assessment in the backyard, next year have a $5,000 assessment in the front yard. So that's my concern. So if some of these places are getting this hookup fee on both of them for $5,000, that's all I'm asking for. So, that's my concern.
Okay.
So, appreciate you listening to me.
Yep. Thank you, Tony. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jackie Lanou, and I live at 136 East Emory Street. It's my understanding that my property is not affected by this, because my, I get my sewer and water from a different branch, so the only thing I got was, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing I got was a fire hydrant, and then a little bit of curb, because my sewer and water come in from First Street East.
She's at the end of the project on the east.
So I didn't even get the new sewer line. But yet, I'm being charged for it.
What, did you get a new fire hydrant?
Yeah, yeah.
Fire hydrant?
In the middle of my yard.
Chris, you know that property, what she's talking, what is it again?
On the top of my head, yeah.
It'll be on the south side of East Emory.
My stuff comes in from the other.
Far east. Oh, yeah, okay, I see a little bit of a front there. That's something we could review closer. It looks like there's some work proposed in front of the house, about half your lot.
But, like I said, mine comes in from the other way.
Your utilities, but do they redo the street in front of your house and stuff?
Yeah, the other street.
Yeah.
Well, actually.
Or the main.
My driveway's a cutoff, so I actually, they don't, but you can take a look at it.
Yeah.
So like, I could get to my driveway and stuff, so they did a, part of my street was.
It didn't affect your driveway, but it, the street in front of part of your property was.
Yeah, part of the property.
And that's why it was included. I don't know if something else, I want to revisit or not.
Okay, so then, you guys review it and make a determination on what is left?
After the hearing here, the council will act on whether they want to adopt the resolution, or pass the resolution adopting the assessments, and they can amend things. And it doesn't have to be tonight. Our deadline kind of is to get it certified to the county by November 30th, so it could be done at the next council meeting if you.
Thank you very much.
Or amended thereafter, I should say, too.
Well, it can be amended less.
And then change a couple at the next meeting or something.
Got you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Dolores Fredericks, I live at 48 Park Street. And I guess my biggest concern is, everybody is paying the same thing, right?
Correct.
According to this.
Except the city, we're paying more for our lots.
Yeah, but why should I have to pay for water, or water lines, if I didn't have them? You know, some of them dead.
She's one of those.
Why should I have to pay for more of a lot than I got?
She got assessed in for 2011 water main.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we did, a few years ago.
Okay.
So I guess that's my biggest concern. And I'm not the only one that's in the same shape, you know, getting paid, have to pay for water and, and that, so.
Understand.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out.
All right.
Anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
I'm Larry LaVoy, and I own a property, 484 Park Street, and I'm kind of in the same boat as she is. There was the water main assessment, which was like $5,000, $6,000. Now we're hit with another assessment, and, you know, I know you, we can't be fair to everybody, we try, but it's, but, you know, how do you handle these things? Because I bought that property for my son to live in, and then he moved away. The property's not worth much, and... And when you get a, a five thousand dollar assessment and then you're already paying off, uh, five thousand some dollar assessment, that's almost as much as my property is worth. And, you know, it's a tough deal.
I understand.
Anyway, so, um, that, that's all I had to say. Is there a, uh, now, this is, I did have one, sorry, I had one more question. This here is the total assessment, this includes the street and curb work and everything, correct? Okay, so, um, was there, is, is there later a comment section on other things or not?
Well, we have a public comment if you wanna say something. We haven't gotten any yet because I wasted a lot of time.
No, that's okay, sorry, I moved over here so I could see the screen.
No, I got you.
Thank you.
That wasn't a waste of time, by the way, I appreciate that. Sir?
I'm Pete Bader and I live on three oh five Long Green Lane. And initially, what some said about the ci- city council would pay for the plumbing charges to pay the plumber and then...
Assess it back to the property?
Right, right, so pay, either, either put it back onto the property to pay for taxes, including the taxes, or pay the plumber and then we pay the city with an interest, I think was at one time mentioned.
Yeah, similar to the three other petitions we have here later in the meeting, you can do the same for yours. Um, just contact me and give the amount and...
Can, can it be put on to taxes?
Yep.
And then you pay it so much each year?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Dave Kazi, we live on Long Green Lane, also, uh, it's nice that the assessment went down. Very nice. Okay, we can live with that. My question is, the schematic, the new land, our backyard looks like a war zone. And I've, the plumber's been out there and he can't find where we're supposed to hook up from the house to the construction zone, uh, line. And I don't think we can meet the November twenty-fourth deadline. He has to come out there again and hand dig and look. We're not gonna make it by November twenty-fourth.
We'll work with you.
So, other than that, if Dunnick comes over and straightens out the yard a little bit next spring, uh, we'll get through it.
Our engineer is nodding his head, so that'll happen. Yeah, even if Chris has to do it himself, he'll seed it for you. Seth?
I was just wondering if the, all the city parkland that was included in the assessments, why that was included in the assessments since the city's gonna be paying that? City taxpayers are gonna be paying that anyway. Would the city have met that twenty percent rule of assessment without the parkland? And then, um, I'm just wondering, is the present, um, assessment method that you came up with this time, is that going to be the method that's used for the futures? Property owners looking at subsequent projects, is, is this gonna be pretty close to what will be used in the future projects?
Yes, and yes. Does that answer your two questions? Well, it does, yes and yes, there's the answer to the two questions, man.
Okay, why, why was the parkland...
Because of the issue you raised.
To make twenty percent?
Yes, sir. And to make it more equitable for everybody.
But in other words then, the taxpayers are paying a little bit more because of that, the general taxpayers, is that correct?
All taxpayers.
Everybody. Cause the message we got the last time was we all should be sharing more of the burden, citywide, and that's what we're doing.
Any, um, measures planned for people who pay the full assessments in twenty-fifteen?
Well, they had the right to appeal it.
Can't go back.
Chris, you're gonna say something?
Uh, maybe I didn't say, I don't remember, but, um, of the total project cost, about eleven percent of the total project cost is being assessed to private property owners. That makes sense.
And the city adopted an infrastructure reserve fund, so that's gonna help reduce...
Yeah, offset.
Debt that the city have to incur in the next project, so that will greatly actually reduce the borrowing, so that should lower assessments as well.
Good point. Did you get that, Seth? Matt, repeat that for the paper, please.
Infrastructure Reserve Replacement Fund that the city has implemented to garner funds to apply towards future projects. That'll greatly reduce the debt that the city have to borrow for future projects, which as a result will reduce assessments for property owners.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, nobody else? We got the, the properties that were brought up, we got those marked down, and we could figure, we'd figure something out by the next meeting, you said, right, Chris? Cause we don't have to have it certified until November thirtieth?
Do you wanna read these?
Go ahead and read those, Shane, yep, the two, the letters that you got.
We got one letter here, um, it'll be eight A, one. Dear City of Tracy, Minnesota, this is a written objection to the amount of the assessment on parcel ID three-one dash one-zero-four zero-six-six-six dash zero. For the twenty-seventeen infrastructure improvement project by the affected property owner, Dwayne Douglas Berry. It is a great, it is a vacant lot assessed to have a valve for taxation of five hundred dollar, a value for taxation of five hundred dollars, thank you. Dwayne Douglas Berry, four-seventy-nine Morgan Street, which is a vacant lot on the corner of Center and East Emery.
Okay.
Or Emery, I should say. The next letter, eight A two. Serving notice of written objection, objection to the proposed assessment role, twenty-seventeen infrastructure improvement projects for seven forty Second Street East, Tracy, Minnesota. Uh, dear Shane, I'm appealing said assessment based on the lack of city code definition of substantial completion of said project. To date, my property does not have driveway access and grass seed planted in disturbed areas. Elaine Fisher, property owner at seven forty Second Street East.
She can't get in her driveway?
No.
Uh, yeah, it'll, later this week it'll be pouring. And a lot of, a lot of times projects that the assessment, you, no, I'm sorry. The rest of the concrete should be poured this week, so I think next week it'll be cured and we'll drive on it. And as far as the not being completed, there's nothing that says the project even has to be started to do the assessment hearing. So that's, a lot of cities do do the assessment hearing first before construction starts.
Okay. If the grass seeds any indication, it may take a while for that to take.
Well, I fully understand that, but... I'm Elaine Fisher, I live at seven forty Second Street East and I went out and looked up the city charter on paying the assessment and how it works to find out it's been struck. And I guess my questions and concerns was how, you know, what is the city code for paying such assessments to find out? Well, it's just a policy. And I guess I never got a copy of what your policy is, it's whatever you say at the time of the project is, is gonna be how it's paid. Well, I think that leaves a lot of us wondering. What and when?
Does the information about having it done by the end of the week, does that help you at all?
Well, yeah, it does, it does help, but I guess I wanted the definition of substantial completion because substantial completion to me may mean one thing and to you entirely something different.
All right. Well, how about this, can, uh, you see what happens the end of the week, then get back to us to make sure it's done? So you can get into your driveway?
Well, I'm not gonna be, it is not gonna be done because I'm not gonna be able to drive on at the end of the week.
Well, I'm just saying, it makes sure the, it is done more so than what's done now.
Oh, okay.
That's what I mean.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so we got that, so we got the properties that we need to look at, right? We have to figure something out about the vacant lots. How many do we have for this project, do you know? Just one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'd just like to say I think our contractor's done an excellent job, yeah, under the conditions that they had to work in. They couldn't help the rain and stuff and, and I see the work that has been done, is proceeded and looks excellent, and I'm looking forward to mine looking like that.
Thank you, thank you for saying that.
Could I maybe say one more thing too? Overall, we've really appreciated everyone on the project, they've been really good to work with. We're not with the contractor, of course, but I think the contractor's been appreciative, um, and yeah, there was some rain that came at a really bad time in October, so... That would've been a lot different, things can dry out easier when it's ninety degrees out, so it came at a bad time, but we're getting through it.
Thank you. All right. Getting back to the agenda. We're on number six. Anybody having, on the council of any conflict of interest that's on this agenda at all or in, in our packet? Nope. Public comment, anybody from the public wanna comment on something that's not on the agenda? Now's your time.
I actually wanna talk to everyone, to the council, to the people here, to the residents of Tracy, Minnesota. I, like many people, was appalled in the last sixty days about what I read in the paper. And I didn't see any T there as in team. As a city, we will win as a team. We will lose as individuals not willing to be team. I saw a lot of passion, you need passion to be successful. And that's good, but you have to channel it. I didn't see a lot of respect, that our word is hard to come by nowadays. And I would like to challenge everybody to be respectful. And last of all, the golden rule, treat others as you would like to be treated. It's hard to imagine what that other person is going through, but when I heard Steve say, talk about all the calls that he's gotten, I know what that's like. I live a very busy life. And that's not consideration, that's not thinking. I, I totally disagree with a number of decisions at times. But I really believe that we can learn something from this, we can become a better town. And battles are not won in one day. It's over time. This is a great place to live.
It is.
And it's worth fighting for, but we need to fight fair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated. Anybody else? Okay, we got no reports, petitions, requests and communications, we have ten A Jessica Lamb Water Bill.
Okay, so I, um, got the water bill last month and mine, like everybody else, went up, but however, mine was two hundred and twelve dollars. Um, I called down to the city office, talked to them, was told the water went through the meter, there's not much we can do. Okay, understandable, pay it, some weird fluke happened, chalk it up to a leak or whatever. I get the bill again for this month and it's three hundred and some dollars. Now, I own a little like nine hundred square foot house that has one bathroom. There's no way that we went through eighty-six units of water in two months. Especially when I work, my boyfriend works out of the home for eight hours a day, forty hours plus a week. Our kids are at daycare and school and then the weekends we're gone or at parents' house doing whatever. Shane actually came out, we, I don't know if you found a leak, I, we have searched our entire house up and down and haven't found a leak. The water softener's not even plugged in.
Is that what I was gonna ask?
Nope.
It doesn't run all the time?
No, it does not, it's not plugged in. So I've kind of have a suspicion that it was something with our outside spigot. We don't use our outside spigot, I used it once all summer and that was on September seventh, which is when the water came to a stop. So what I'm asking is five hundred dollars when you are a young, not very great job person is a lot. Especially in two months. If we can either forgive part of it, or if that's not possible, if it's possible to get like an extension and maybe pay part of the three hundred dollar bill this month and part of it next month on what's top of our normal. Say normally we use like three to seven units, I mean, our bills are usually not over seventy-five dollars.
Okay, so they averaged seventy-five dollars before it started happening?
Exactly, and it's back down to three units for the last reading.
About a radio read, Peter, Shane, or...
Yeah, and I, I went and looked and the flow was, she was running about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and ninety gallons an hour for the time period between August twenty-fifth and I think the ninth or seventh of September. And it ran day and night. So it's almost like, and typically a softener doesn't run that much water, it'll run a gallon, gallon and a half maybe, a minute. This is running about four gallons a minute. Really, the only thing we can think of is either someone turned the outside spigot on and walked away or, cause it went through the meter, I mean, the register read it, the profile read it. But, so I told her, I said, really, we can't do anything as far as crediting that, I mean, it's up to the council.
Wouldn't there have been something, if the back spigot would've been on, wouldn't there have been something?
There was, but there was a lot of rain at that time and I have three sump pumps and one of our sump pumps drains out on the backyard where our spigot is. And if you guys know where my house, I'm at four-seventy-two Emery, it's the little red house. I like live on the only hill there is in this town, I swear, so...
Lucky you.
Yeah, so my backyard is always soaking wet, especially in the summer, so I guess I didn't see, I mean, I literally thought maybe it was the sump pump running overtime because of the water or because of the rain. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it was constantly wet, but it's summer and I live on a hill.
Have you turned off that back spigot then?
I turned it off, I guess I turned it off.
No, I mean, so there's no water to it, so it doesn't function, so that way you can prevent people from messing with it?
No, I have not, I didn't know you could do that. Sorry, I'm a new homeowner.
No, that's all right, I'm just, just checking. Well...
I do know that the house next to me started construction, I don't know when that was, but there was a lot of concrete work and I do know that they don't have a spigot on that one. Not saying that that's what happened, cause I don't know, but...
Did you ask your neighbor?
I, I did, well, not originally, um, Pam and Tam owned the house next to me and I a hundred percent gave Tam permission to use it at one time, but that was in July. She said when you guys were clear, or when she was cleaning out the house, so, cause I even asked Tam about it, I was like, hey, did you by chance, you know, forget to turn it off all the way? Um, but that was in July that they owned it and then the new owners took over shortly after that and so I, I, I have no clue.
Got you.
As to what is going on and I haven't even seen my new neighbor. Not quite sure who he is.
I understand what the problem is. Shane, when you looked at the, when you looked at the meter, you don't think there's anything wrong with the meter?
It's back to normal now.
It's back to normal?
There's just that one period and the register matches what the radio picked up.
Okay.
And it also matches what the profiling system was reading, so...
So like I said, if I have to pay the full thing, that's fine, but if I could get some sort of extension?
Or let, let's, let's just do this, I mean, why, why don't we just have your bill average what it normally averages?
Okay.
And then you just eventually, you're gonna pay off the extra eventually.
Yep.
Does that sound fair to everybody? I know that's maybe, it's very easy for me to say, but it may be a bookkeeping nightmare, but is that... I know that's maybe, it's very easy for me to say, but it may be a bookkeeping nightmare, but is that possible? Is it?
We did, we did credit the sewer already, because we knew it was an outside.
Okay.
The ones that ran through the sewer. But I told her the water, you know, it went through the meter, so it's up to the council what they want to do.
Well, just pay normally what you would average.
Okay.
To eventually pay it off.
Okay, and can I get that figured tomorrow or something so I can get it in before fifteen? Perfect, thank you guys.
Yes, thank you for coming. Okay. Ten C, Taekwondo request for gym rent reduction. Jeff? We're not gonna have a demonstration, are we?
Nope.
All right.
I just, I represent Tracy Karate School, last fourteen years, I'll just give you history. Last fourteen years, we've had a tournament here in the fall. We use it as a seminar tournament for there at zero cost for our kids. We have a bunch of the instructors that come out there. We give some trophies, do some other things to do some stuff for the kids, so they have an opportunity to, kind of everybody wins type deal. In the past, when the gymnasium over here was always a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, we were charged for a half. And when I checked with the city office in there, Kim had told me she didn't feel it, we felt it, we didn't really fall in that area because we didn't use the whole facility. I was told that the facility either is charged by a fifty dollar deal or a two hundred and fifty dollar deal for to use the entire facility. We feel that the two hundred and fifty dollars is a, I mean, we're glad it'll pay a hundred and fifty, I don't have a problem with that, but. Because that's kind of what we had thought we were gonna pay, but the two fifty is restrictive for what we need to use it for. So I talked with Kim, she had given me to Shane, I talked to Shane about it prior to using it. We used it a couple of weekends ago, everything went fine. I, that's why we're asking for a reduction in the rent. I, I understand that there's not a, like a specific, you know, for our particular usage of it. So that's why we were directed to come to the city council to ask for it.
Yep, fair enough.
We, we look back the last four years, that's what we had paid was one half, which was a hundred and fifty dollars.
All right.
Did you use it how many times, Jeff?
We just used it once, we used it on, we used it on a Saturday. We were in here from eight thirty to nine is registration, we were all out the door by quarter after four. Like I say, when Kim had directed me at the city office, when they come in and use the facility for an hour or two, they're usually billed out at fifty dollars, that's what I was told, verbally told. And then if they used it all day for the entire facility, it was two fifty. And, and, yeah.
For a half, yep.
Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're kind of in between, we didn't really use that, so.
I, I would make a motion to reduce the fee to more than fifty dollars for that use.
There a second? Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. One fifty.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for not breaking the podium.
Yeah, not a problem. No, like I say, I, our goal is, is we've done this for fourteen years for the kids, we'd like to continue to do it as a fall tournament, so.
Yes, no, thank you for that.
And like I say, it's just restrictive when we do that, so, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. I realize I skipped ten B. I was all ready for a Taekwondo demonstration. Uh, we have the interim administrator position, and I was contacted by Wendell Sandy on Friday, and he had indicated that there were, he did have people that were interested in doing the interim city administrator position. He had emailed me again and Shane today too with specifics about what really we would be looking at his cost, and this is what he'd indicated to me. That he has experienced administrators interested in the interim position. The work, if we were to contract with them, obviously would be done by a contract. He's suggesting that sixty-five hundred dollars per month would be sufficient. The contract for between twenty to twenty-five hours per week with meetings as needed, and that he would be willing to work with the city attorney to draft an agreement that, or a contract we could enter into. He advises that it's probably something we should do. He indicated to me that there are five other cities currently advertising for administrators. So it may be even past January before we have our position filled. So, and that's why it may benefit us to have an interim. He'd also indicated that the position is advertised, will be advertised today, and that he's made initial contacts with potential candidates to talk about the, the opening. So, really, what our discussion is tonight, and I told him I would get back to him, as to whether or not that's an expense we should undertake. Looks like he said sixty-five hundred bucks a month for twenty to twenty-five hours of work. You know, I know these things ain't cheap, but that's a lot of money. I don't know, I mean, I can see the benefits of having an interim, but I, I don't know, not, not for that expense. But in order for just me just talking about it, Shane, are you, with what's happening, are you comfortable with the workload? Are there things you say, hey, I would rather have an interim because I'm not doing the same stuff I normally would do, and I want to get to that, or what?
Right now is kind of a less busy time, I guess, so it doesn't bother me now. Now come, if it's in March, April, then things are gonna start getting busy on my end. Right now, I just been giving the guys list of things to do and kind of go back between the two places. Our biggest thing is if we can get like a part-time office help to do the year-end, the ten ninety-nines, W twos.
Yep.
I know how to do them, but I just don't know. You know, if we can get a little help in that, that's where we're gonna need it with Kim going on maternity leave, so.
Okay, so it's more office help as opposed to having an administrator? Okay. And then financially speaking, if we were to contract for sixty-five hundred dollars a month, what's your opinion as to whether or not we could afford that?
I guess I didn't have time to run the numbers. Maybe one month would be over budget based on what we weren't paying.
For this, for this year? Yeah, for what's left of this year.
Don't you think that's an awful lot of money for twenty, twenty-five hours a week?
Oh, I didn't say it's, it is.
I just did the math.
It'd be a lot of, it'd be a lot of money for forty hours a week.
Especially because if we have an intern come in now, and they can't come in until January, and then Shane's just gonna have to show them what to do anyway, and then another month we're gonna have a.
I get that. Yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that.
So if you figure it out, sixty-five hundred, if you base it on twenty-five hours a week, you're looking at sixty-five bucks an hour is what it comes out to be.
We might have more people volunteering to be an intern.
I'll do it for fifty-four.
So, but I, before, not, not to be flippant about it, but before we just say, no, that's, don't worry about it. I wanted to make sure that what's happening is okay with the workload and everything is functioning as well as it can.
As long as my staff don't rely on me.
And then my next question, Shane, if we're gonna go for some part-time administrative help, are they gonna have the ability to do those tasks that you identified, or?
And that's the thing.
Or would be better, I know the accounting firm will do W twos and ten ninety-nines.
Yep.
Cost-wise?
That's an option, I haven't talked to them yet. I know they did say if we needed any help in any areas. I mean, they know our program. The problem is our program isn't something, you know, like those QuickBooks or something, a lot of people know that.
Yeah, no, I'm saying that thing is a little different.
And it's a little harder to maneuver, so. But right now, Kim's kind of cross-training the other gals in the office along with myself on certain things. It's just a segregation of duties to maintain that.
Yep.
No, I get that, and we've always had that issue because our office is small. Okay. All right, well, I'll let Wendell know that I, we appreciate him reaching out to those people, but that's a little bit too much money.
See if we can come back with something a little better deal.
And if it drags on until?
Yes, then we have to revisit it.
Then we can always revisit it.
Then we have to revisit it, yep.
I'm already gonna have to go through the election training anyway, because if they did hire full-time on by the end of January, if they don't have the training, they're not gonna get it, so, you know, for that, so.
Speaking of, not to jump all over the place, but since, since we brought up about the election. I know, Matt, I know you haven't had time to think about this, but with Bill's resignation and the policy that we have now as a council that we only fill spots by election. Do we have enough time to be able to have that election in February along with the recall?
It has to have seventy-four days. I think we should. I think we'd be close, but. Put that on. Yeah. Two instead of, two, two and one instead of two separate elections.
And would you have, okay, and then would you have, not to put you on the spot, but what, what's a filing period for candidates? I mean, you know, you have to, we have to think about that. I mean, it's simple to say put it on there, but I don't know what we're supposed to do with a filing period. But we don't have to, as long as we could put something, because I think that's what we need to do. I mean, because the one option is we can go with a shortened council for up to a year. But I don't think that we should. That's my view. So anyway.
That'll be the time to do it if you can do both.
Yep.
We're at ninety-six days right now.
Okay.
How far would that be from the next council meeting?
The thirtieth, or the twenty-seventh? Seventy-one, you'd ask. You'd be at seventy-five days. No, you were at eighty-six before, so now you're down to seventy-five.
That's kind of close.
Yeah, I need to look at, see if there's an initial.
So do we need a, we need a motion, or?
Well, we can do, let, let's do, I, I wanted to bring that up now while we're thinking about it, because we have to think about it. Because if we're not doing it in February, I don't want to have to go through another expense of another election, say like in May, when we could function with, we can wait till November. So let's just.
I'll look at that.
I just brought that up. Okay, we got ten D, recommendations for items to be addressed by the city charter. Rosemary?
My name is Rosemary Martin, and I chair the charter commission. We've had three meetings so far, and we'll have the fourth meeting in December. And that will be to prepare our annual report with templates that we're getting from the League of Minnesota Cities. Today, we had a go-to meeting with the League of Minnesota Cities, and we had a in-depth view or a general overview of what Charter Commission is all about. We got a lot of good information. We will, we're working specifically with those parts of the charter that need to become in tune with the state statute, and with Matt's help, we'll be doing that. We're trying to do it in a fashion so that we are doing it in a one-time fee, because there's all the public, one-time, all-purpose time, because there's fees and publishing and everything that goes along with that. And right now, the statute would take precedence anyway. So tonight, I'm here to ask for recommendations for items that need to be addressed by the charter from the city council, so. And we meet on the eighth of December, so you've got till the eighth of December to get them to us.
Okay, so if we have time to think about it.
Put you on the spot.
Okay, because I wasn't thinking about that, so we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, ten E, we got code of conduct for committee members, and we had that, oh, did we? We have a resolution for that.
There's, there's a ten E also.
On the desk, or, there we go, I got it, I got it.
We have a code of conduct for employees that they sign. We have nothing for committee members. So we just figured this would be a good idea to keep everybody in check as far as what's, what's expected of them as far as their codes of conduct within individual committees, so. It's up for discussion, the council.
I, I don't, I don't see a problem with having people sign this, I mean, you know, and us, even us, with us dealing with each other, we need to abide.
My question is, would they fall under the same thing as the employee handbook, even though they're volunteers?
No.
I'm just trying to eliminate some paperwork.
At least it's only one sheet.
Unfortunately, we looked into that.
All right, so do we have a motion to adopt this, then?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Posed? Motion carries. And we got ten F. Waiving the VMC, the chamber waiving the VMC Community Halloween event fee after the fact.
I'd make a motion to waive the fees.
Second it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries, ten G, again. Police escort for parade of lights after the fact?
No.
No.
What am I looking at? Don't listen to me. Well, listen to me sometimes.
November twenty-fifth.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. All right. I was looking at the wrong thing.
If it fits, if it fits the police schedule, I'd make a motion to do that, to allow that.
Second that.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Okay. Oh, that's right, I was looking at the, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Ten H. Got the airport maintenance and operation grant contract?
Anyone got a chance to read the memo on that? So it was kind of caught between the crack, between, after she left and before I was officially an interim. So it's, one half was signed, the other half wasn't, and they wouldn't let me sign it. It had to be the same signature on both of them, so they just want another resolution, and then that, I can go.
Is that in here?
Yep. Make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash eighty-six.
Second that.
Motion made in second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Posed? Motion carries. All right, we went through the petitions here. No, we didn't.
Those are the objections.
We got an approved petition for local improvements.
There's three of them there, and that's for the private work. This is irrelevant to the assessment that's going on from the public hearing. This is kind of their own.
I, I support this, but just out of curiosity, we had it in orders to allow that before, and we took it out of the orders. But now we can do it because it's a petition for it?
Only as a special assessment.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, I had to correct them up there, so I'd make, I'd make a motion to approve this. Request.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Posed? Motion carries. All right, next, we got approval of delinquent items to be certified for special assessments. And we had, we had that.
It's in the back here, right? It's in the back there.
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions about, I mean, it is a long list.
A lot of it's for mowing.
Mowing, some removal, and some water bills? I'd make a motion to approve that list to be certified for special assessments.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Uh, we got Lutheran Social Services site agreement. We have that.
So I indicated in the memo for that what the amount was for this year and what they're proposing for next year. They did the same thing to us last year, the recall. And then now we brought it back to them, and they changed their amount, so I don't know. That was something you're looking at to do again, or what your thoughts were on this?
What was last year's?
What's the amount now?
Twenty-five seventy-nine is what we charge per year.
What was that to me?
Twenty-five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. They're looking basically to cut it in half.
Yeah, they did do the same thing last year, didn't they?
Yeah. They, like they base that on a per meal count, which is their bookkeeping method.
They do serve meals on a count, too.
Right.
More than just Tracy residents.
Yeah.
You know what, they take them to.
Lake Benton for sure.
Yeah. That kind of amazed me, why they go all the way to Lake Benton.
What we want to do, keep it the same?
I'd hate to lose it as a source of the community, but I think we need to go back and, and make a counter on it, and.
You want to counter it what we had last year?
Yeah, I think that's, that's my opinion.
I would agree with that.
Fair enough. We have a motion for that?
So move.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed? Passes? And we got approval to purchase polling pads.
So currently, the county.
So, currently, the county has received some grant money to purchase new equipment for the election. Um, that'll be covered a hundred percent by the grant, but they do have some leftover money that they're looking at having just the, the bigger cities, Balloton, Cottonwood, Marshall, Minota, and Tracy, purchase polling pads, which would replace the paper rosters. So, you can actually register to vote online. You can, um, sign, sign the, instead of the roster, you'd sign the polling pad. Um, so it would replace a lot of the paper.
So, they're like iPads?
Kind of, yep, they're a little bit bigger than that. If we don't do it now, we may not have grant money, and it will eventually be mandatory to have it. If all of the cities agree to be part of this, it would be roughly twenty-four hundred dollars, which I know Madonna has budgeted for it, or she had budgeted for it. The concern is, every year after that, you have maintenance, which would be roughly eight hundred dollars a year, and that would have to be done whether there is an election or not. They'd still have to keep the software up to date in case an election arises. Those dollar figures may change based on which cities move forward with it.
So, you think eventually we'll have to do this, anyway?
Mm-hmm. Eventually, you'll have to do it, and at that point, there likely won't be any grant money available.
Right.
So, by doing it now, it would ensure that we do get some grant monies towards it. They, you're required to have two pads. The twenty-four hundred dollars would be for two pads, and the eight hundred dollars maintenance would also be for both pads.
So, our cost is still twenty-four hundred with the grant money?
With the grant money. It would be higher than that without the grant money.
Are two pads enough?
I feel like it would be. You could have one for new registrations and one to, um, sign in to get your ballot. I know that's the, the number that Balloton and Cottonwood and Minota and Tr- and possibly else are going with. Marshall's looking at fifteen, but they have got three polling places, and they're, of course, much larger than what we are, so.
They can give us two.
After the maintenance is done.
I, I mean, i- if we eventually have to do it, I mean, we might as well take advantage of grant money. I mean, in anything you buy, there's going to be maintenance involved, and it'll be indicated it's already been budgeted.
Yes, and, and at what point it will be mandatory, I don't know that.
By the time it is, they'll probably change equipment, anyway, but if you don't have it, you can't.
But then the grant will be gone, too.
Yep. My, my question is, is two going to be enough? Because you usually have three election judges sitting there with the pad, paper pads, and then the registration.
It is much quicker to do it. Rather than paging through all the paper, you can type, start typing the name in, it pulls it up whether or not they're registered to vote. If they're not, then they can register on the pad, and if they are, they just sign the pad, and away they go. You know, it's.
She'd say money on the other side, because you wouldn't need that extra judge sitting at the table.
It's very beneficial to the county, because they are then able to just plug in and download the new registrations, so they're not manually entering those. But it doesn't sound like the county is going to kick in money towards it on top of the grant money from the state.
Well, let's purchase them. Do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the two?
I would make that motion for that.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we got a request to have a closed meeting for asked me negotiations. Do we have a motion for that? Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Tracy Area Chamber requests reduction on booze wagon. And the chamber would like to run a booze wagon with the drawing at her annual banquet on the twentieth.
Did you ever get any in the chamber functions, or even like the beer cart when they're pulling the wagon around to a little bunch of different booze?
It's a raffle item that they use for fundraiser.
He bought five-dollar tickets.
And you get all the booze that's in it.
Get the wagon and the booze that's in it.
Don't they have a discount on a bulk purchase like that, anyway, or, or is it, aren't they asking for a different discount?
That starts running into legalities, too.
So, what exactly can we do?
They want a discount on the actual booze itself. Did they get one last year? Do we know that?
Not that I recall.
All they did the first time was they bought a lot of outdated stuff. I don't know if they carried it through after that. But I thought, isn't there a policy on a case lot over there, ten percent off a case lot, or?
No idea.
Let's just ask Sandy.
What, because that would be.
Something.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd make a motion if they, whatever current discounts for case purchases be applied to them.
But they never buy a case. They're buying bottles here and there.
So, they're buying mixed cases, basically.
Yeah. At least from what I've seen in the past.
We can talk to Sandy.
Yeah.
You guys have a number?
Yeah, I, I don't know. Normally, it's like a ten percent on, on a case lot, and you can mix bottles.
Well, if, if, if they don't buy a case, or something, how about a ten percent discount, I'm fine with. For the.
I'll make a motion that way, then, if I can.
Have them figure it out.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion, Tony.
Make a motion, give a ten percent discount on purchases for the booze.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We got the resolutions. We got the resolution adopting special assessment for the infrastructure improvement. And, uh, we have to do that now, or can we wait till next meeting, since we got somewhere we're going to mess around with?
Um, either you can do it now, and then we can do another roll with only those two or three properties, or something.
Okay.
Next time, right.
Let's do it now, then.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty seventeen dash eighty-five for the twenty seventeen infrastructure project.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We took care of twelve B. We got Resolution twenty seventeen eighty-seven, establishing a polling place location for the city of Tracy for the twenty-eighteen calendar year.
I would make a motion on that resolution.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve D. We took care of that one. Twelve E, Resolution twenty-seven eighty-nine, approving application for gambling permit for the Tracy Area Chamber of Commerce.
It's probably for the wagon.
For the liquor wagon?
No. That's something different.
Different one?
Yep.
Do we have that? It's not in here.
This is one that they do every year.
That isn't, it's no big deal.
It's a raffle. It's a different raffle. It's a raffle that they do every year.
Is a what?
It's a raffle, but it's a different raffle from the booze wagon raffle, the one that they do every year.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Um, when is it? Well, it may be in conjunction with it, because it's January twentieth.
Is that for the chamber, at the chamber banquet, though, on the, you?
Yeah, they have a silent auction in.
Yep.
Apples, they'll do that, but it'll be for all of them, I believe.
Yes.
Well, we can make the motion, and then we'll draft the resolution. I'll sign it. Do we have a motion to do that?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we took care of twelve F, too. All right, we got the consent calendar. We got the municipal council payable. We got approval of the library minutes from nine, nine-seven, twenty-seventeen, and a relief association minutes from ten-two, twenty-seventeen. Anybody have any questions or comments about the consent calendar?
Just on, on one, I don't know, Shane, I didn't find it in time. An outlet at the liquor store, electrical bill of three hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Yeah, that was another Labor Day emergency.
Oh, okay.
That we had to supply for them.
Yep.
It's going to be similar to, um, what they have in the parking lot right now. They're going to have to pay the difference of the electric bill to feed whatever they plug into it for, um, for their concessions.
Okay, but. Whoever's using it's going to have to pay them, but, so, they have one put in, so they can.
The chamber is one wanting to get in there.
Okay.
So, it'll be similar to the parking lot agreement they have with us.
Okay.
Whatever little lots they use, they pay for.
That makes sense.
Otherwise, running a cord.
Yeah, that's, nope.
We looked at, we weighed the two options. It was, uh, cheaper to run a plug-in through than trying to run a cord out to soften.
I'm just curious. I'd make a motion to approve it and second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Fourteen unfinished business. Reply to questions asked on the twenty-third during the public comment. Matt, you got some answers for at least two of them, don't you?
Yes, there's a legal memorandum that I prepared. There should be a copy available to the public for their review. Basically, in regards to the health insurance contract that the city entered into with, uh, councilman, councilmember Chachuski. Because the city has less than twenty-five employees covered by that insurance contract, it's not subject to competitive law or competitive bidding requirements. And that is a result, there's nothing that prohibits a council member from entering into that contract with the city, so long as that's unanimously approved on the city's vote. So, that really should answer, um, most of those questions. There wasn't a resolution needed, because the city chose not to competitively bid it. In regards to Mr. Anderson, when he was a council member, I, I believe it was a painting contract for one of the vehicles. The city chose to bid that out, and that's, that's why he had to sign the conflict of interest requirements and submit an affidavit before his claim was paid. So, that's the difference. Um, just because it's not required to be competitively bid, and the city chose not to do so, I don't know how long they've chosen to do that, but that's why there was no requirement that he followed those same procedures as a contract that was required to be competitively bid, or the city chose to bid. And then, finally, the consequences for any potential violations of city charter, city codes, depending upon what the violation is and what the violation of the code or charter, it could be a criminal offense. If it's a criminal offense, as mayor knows, it has to be referred to law enforcement to investigate, and then they refer to the Lyon County Attorney's Office. I don't have the authority to do that as the city attorney. That's not part of my authority or responsibility. And similarly, the police department of the city would be conflicted, because they're hired, they're hired by the city. They work for the city, so that'd have to happen by, happen from the sheriff's department, and thus refer to the county attorney's office. So, a lot of that is criminal in nature and has to follow the criminal protocol. So, it takes investigation. I can't do that. The city can't really do that, because depending upon what the violation is, there may be a conflict with one or all the members. So, that's the consequences for practical purposes and the procedures in which must be followed.
Okay. Thank you for that, and I know, uh, Bill had answered one of the questions when I saw him yesterday, that, uh, one of the questions was, was there an affidavit filed by Chachuski on twenty-seventeen? And Bill had indicated, uh, in a typewritten response to me, yes, Madonna went over this with me and had me sign a paper regarding the conflict of interest, and it should be in my personnel file. Okay. We got all those questions addressed. Okay, next unfinished business, B, the budget.
All right, so Kim and I sat down, and we went through with a little finer tooth comb. I mean, we have a little bit of time yet before this has to be certified, uh, i.e. the next council meeting. But, um, we found a mistake in, uh, health insurance. Not the health insurance itself, but the life insurance, which is also taken out of the health insurance, uh, budget code. And it was just, uh, instead of thirty-six hundred dollars per, um, per year for all the employees, it was put in there, thirty-six hundred dollar per employee for every, per year. So, it ended up being like seventy-seven thousand, like seventy-five, seventy-six thousand. So, I found that, um, on that, I made some little bit of adjustments in my department, after kind of know what next year's going to bring. The legal department looked like they're still budgeting based on what we paid Frank. Obviously, with Matt only here when we need him here, you know, we've got some savings there. I think last year, we were at twelve thousand, and so far this year, we're up to seventeen thousand for his services. So, I left twenty-four thousand in there for next year, just to, just to have a little bit of cushion there, so, you know, there's another twenty thousand there. So, I just kind of chewed away at all them, and based on those numbers, and I haven't heard back from any other department heads, if they want to do some reduction, um, in their budget, if they need to do any shaving, but based on what we have right now with Jake and those adjustments, we're at four-point-five for six, four-point-five-six percent, um, budget left.
Good.
So, I mean, I shaved about as much as I can, um, the other departments, when you meet them. If they have more wants than needs, you know, they can.
Yeah, I don't know if, if anybody would want to give an update on the different departments when they met. I mean, I, I know I, you know, with the library, I mean, it's fairly bare bones. Just had a couple of questions that got answered, that some health insurance costs, I think, are spread out between departments.
Yeah, and those are now adjusted to, to that spreadsheet that was off. So, all those, all those codes, um, came, went through and changed them all, so.
Okay.
We're all up to date. We ran another report, um, based on that, so. There's some transfers out we had to adjust, and.
There's a little adjustment, I'll check, check with Jason on that we can do, but like I mentioned to you before, I'm really concerned with spending almost thirty thousand dollars a year on telephones. We need to look at that.
Yep.
Fix that.
I'm going to.
And that doesn't include the cell phones. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, there, there's room there. If we figure out in the contract what we can do, so.
Yeah, and I'm going to have them check into if we have a contract signed with Bass, or, or not.
I know, I, I checked with Jason. He's got room in there for five or six grand, but there was none, another one. I don't know if we need to take some of that and make a new line item, um, for the civil defense, for the equipment replacement. There's nothing there. So, if they got a siren goes down, or they, he's got, got a little bit for batteries, but he doesn't have anything for upgrades and improvements.
So, starting an equipment replacement fund?
Something in there where he can, where it'll have a chance to build. I mean, right now, he's got only any, and that was my suggestion, not his. Right now, he's got some money stashed away for batteries.
Okay.
Except for batteries go, but if they have a siren go down or something like that, there's nothing there.
Are you looking at, like, starting a fund that would carry on, like, like an equipment replacement?
Yeah.
So, there, if he, if he was to shave, you know, whatever money, and, you know, his department, like, if he has money to spare to police?
Right.
We can move it over?
Yeah, that's.
Without changing the levy or?
I'll, I'll get, I'll get with them and double-check the numbers, and I'll get back with you on.
Yeah.
On what we've come up with, and, but it'd be, it'd be a benefit to have it, something stashed away for.
Yeah, I know it was four hundred dollars to fix the antenna on that one.
Yeah. Then we've got nothing, you know, then it's all unbudgeted, so.
So, yeah, if there's any reductions in the other departments, if you want to.
I'll get with them again, and then I'll give you what we come up with.
I know, um, I've heard from you for the library.
Yep.
I met with Bill. We, the health insurance numbers were the main thing. We obviously found, well, that was way out of whack from the prior, prior years, so. But I guess, um, you know, if you want me to have something for the next meeting for the budget?
Yeah, let's do that. I mean, I mean, even if it's basically, you saying it's like four percent, I mean, that's better than what we got. I mean, if anybody's got anything else they want to add to it or reduce to it, or, I'm sorry, reduce to it, just let Shane know.
I mean, I can run, say if you, say if someone, between all the departments shaved off five thousand dollars, um, we're looking at. So, five would be four-point-eleven. So, I mean, half a percent every five grand. So, I mean, half a percent every five grand roughly.
Good. All right, we're going in the right direction. Okay, surplus sale update?
Um, I just went through all the bids. We had quite a few bids.
Good.
Took me about four hours to go through that spreadsheet, but, uh, we call them in the morning, so I can have a... I can have a total revenue, um, by next council meeting.
A lot of it would go, a lot of the items go.
Yeah.
All your fire hydrants?
Yes. Except the tanker. Wish that would have gone, because now we got to find a place for that. So the tanker, I think we might put on like Minbid or Craig's List or something like that, so we can get out to a... More of the people that would be looking for something like that, because government and town, obviously, is looking at it.
Want a tanker.
But I can tell you the...
That's that old Ford.
The yellow one, yep. I can tell you the, the bid for, the high bid for the old brown Chevy was three hundred and five, so no more than that.
Good. You should throw the tanker in with it.
So Jeff, I don't know if he left or not, but did they say how the red rooster sale went? Have you heard? You know, did he go?
Everything, just about everything's gone.
Yeah.
And, uh, they died into a full dollar, and they'll have to take them to recover. They recovered about half their expenses to take care of the accessories in the place, so...
Well, that's good.
Yeah, it's... A lot of it's got, some of it went to the museum and repurposed other places, and all the Eagles bought some stuff, and Benson's bought some stuff, so it's... It was a busy Saturday morning over there for it.
It looks clear.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, uh, next, and, uh, VMC being open to the public? I don't know if we looked into that at all, or any insurance issues, or can we do it, or what?
It had been done in the past, and I believe the school said Wednesday afternoons were really the only time that they weren't utilizing it.
Wednesday nights.
Wednesday nights. The afternoon not.
No, like six to eight.
Six, six to eight on Wednesday night. So I guess the other problem after that would land out who's going to man it.
Well, I think they can get volunteers. I mean, if, if we're just having it for two hours, we can get people here. So it's Wednesday, six to eight, if we do that.
Well, I was over at the, we had the community education meeting, and Chad and Bill were both there that day. So I asked them about, they said, as far as they were concerned, you could open it up anytime people wanted to walk during, you know...
Can they do that in the morning?
They said their only request was that there be like a bench outside for people to change shoes, just so they're not walking in their regular, like, when you go out to the fitness center?
Yeah.
Change shoes, just so they don't have to, somebody has to be cleaning the floor all the time. But they said use it all you can.
Well, I think maybe to get it, get it going, if we have it designated time, so people get used to coming here, I don't think it'd be, if we do say six to eight on Wednesdays. And then I, I can contact who was asking me, uh, about the use, and I think we'd be able to get volunteers for that.
So do you want to wait until we get the volunteers?
Yes, I'll, I'll let them know what, if we're okay with at least starting off Wednesday night, six to eight, it's an open gym, that there'd be...
And school's planning on doing it again, I think, this winter on Sundays like they have in the past.
Yeah.
So that's, that's their current thought process.
Yeah, and like Shane said, it is open during the day. We have regulars coming in all day to walk up until three o'clock when the school comes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they said use it. Just take care of it.
Walker usually don't cause too much trouble, but if they're in there playing basketball, you know, it's, it's nice to make sure they're not hanging on hoops and stuff like that, but the general population in the morning don't really...
Hang on hoops? Well, I'll have them get in contact with the city office, then to say, if, if we don't, we don't have to start this Wednesday, obviously, but just on Wednesday, six to eight, and I'm sure they'll be able to get the volunteer to watch.
Do you want me to put something on carousel, ask them for volunteers?
Yeah, well, that'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you for, thank you for that. Might as well get it utilized.
Okay, uh, new business? Nothing. Mayor Council Communications, anybody have anything that they want to visit about before we close, go into closed session? No? Anything? Nothing? All right, well, I appreciate everything, and I hope this is a new beginning for all of us to get back to where we should be, so... Do we have a motion to adjourn and go into closed session?
Second.
Motion made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.